I think we can get underway. I'd like to call this meeting to order and give the recording notice of that according to Mass. State law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform other attendees at the start of the meeting, does anybody care to record? Okay. Now, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your patience. It's good to have everybody here, because we were just started, this is our first time we've been together as a board in person in nearly three years, so it was worth the wait, even if it's an additional 13 minutes. We do appreciate it. I'd like to open the public here, reopen the public hearing, the continued case number PB 2022-12. Eastward MBT LLC trustee-owner seeks approval of definitive subdivision plan. Said subdivision is Open Space Residential Development, OSRD, that includes five building lots, two open space lots, and a new road to the run. Said application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 32551E, Chapter 325 Table 1, Chapter 400 Article 2, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 41 Sections 88K through GG. The property is located at 0 Route 39, Map 63, Parcel C3 in the R-R and W-R zoning districts. Mr. Senney.
Good afternoon. Bill Riley and Dave Clark.
Mr. Riley, sorry.
That's okay. He's better looking than I am, anyway. Dave Clark, Dave's gonna do the presentation, and I'm gonna observe.
Great. So where we left, David Clark, Clark Engineering for the record, where we left off last time, what was that? It was suggested changes to the open space documents, and I believe the Board was waiting for the selectmen to make a decision on the stormwater permit. So the selectmen last night voted for this, in favor of the stormwater part report, and I would imagine that permit is coming shortly. As I stated the last time, we believe this subdivision conforms to the Howard zoning bylaw, as well as your rules and regulations, and obviously now it conforms with the selectmen's stormwater permit regulation. We've been to the Board of Health and had a positive determination by them with some conditions. I believe you're in receipt of those conditions, and those conditions will be added to the final subdivision plan when it comes time for endorsement. I don't believe there's anything else outstanding regarding the subdivision or the engineering portion of it, so I'd be happy to answer any questions from the Board.
We just want to repeat that the open space is going to be conveyed to the Harwich Conservation Commission. It's not going to go to homeowners association.
Fred, Megan, may we hear from?
Sure. The Board of Selectmen did hear the stormwater permit last night and did give a favorable recommendation to approve. We had VHB on the line, and we will be issuing a permit.
Okay. And were you gonna cover the staff report?
Sure.
That'd be great, just so that all, everybody here can...
Okay. All right.
It's a pretty lengthy document. I don't know if we want to go through, do you have a recommendation for hitting the highlights, or?
I think we did the, we did the report last time, I think we were...
The annotations.
We were looking for the updates from departments that we didn't have police and fire.
Right.
And now you do have those, I believe they were emailed out to you all. I can read those for you. The police got back to us and said they do not have a history of traffic complaints or crashes in the area. Their only concern is for the line of sight looking back towards Harwich Center. However, since Turtle Run does not exist, it is, does not exist, it is, I am confident that the developer will have a plan to address any line of sight issues that may come up while they put the road in. Fire Department came back with no concerns. And we did have emails back from Attorney Riley's office, as well as Eastward Company. Would you like me to read those in?
That'd be great.
Okay. Let's see, the first one is from last Wednesday. Good morning, Elaine. This is from Susan Ledoux of Eastward Company. In response to one of Attorney Senney's comments about the proposed natural state area on four of the five building lots, we have incorporated language addressing this into our draft Declaration of Protective Covenants as Paragraph 13. I have attached this document for the planning board's review. Please let me know if you need any hard copies submitted, and I'll have those dropped off. So you should have this Declaration of Protective Covenants within your packet.
Yep.
What we did was we incorporated both protective covenants, the language of the Harwich bylaws relates to open space, kept natural.
Okay.
And the last one is from Attorney Riley stating what he had just talked about with the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board at this time?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last time that you folks were behind, before us, I had asked about the post, the staking for the Turtle Run Road, and you had pointed out to me where it was, and I thank you for that, because I was able to go out and find it, so thank you for that. My question is where, and I have a better understanding now of where Middle Road and Turtle Run are gonna meet, and how it's described on the diagram, but it appears that where Middle Road actually intersects with Turtle Road, that it's almost parallel to Orleans Road. Do you know off the top of your head, how much, is there any distance between Orleans Road and Middle Road where it intersects with?
This is the moon.
This is, this is Middle Road.
Yeah. This is the edge of the Orleans Road.
Okay. Right here, rather than here.
That's right.
Okay. She just answered my question. Thank you.
Scale off the distances, if you want.
And my second question is about the Police Department's concern about the line of sight looking back, looking westward, I guess, or back towards Harwich. And if I'm reading the property line properly, it's pretty, I don't know how much distance there is between the edge of Turtle Road as it meets Orleans Road and the edge of your property. I guess the question is, is there enough space in there for you to be able to clear whatever might need to be cleared to improve this line of sight? And if not, how do you go about, if you need to take 50 feet back? I don't know. Is that town property, so many feet off the edge of the highway?
The heavy line is the sideline of Orleans Road, 39, so there's probably, from the edge of pavement, there's about eight feet from the edge of pavement to this...
From the property line.
To the sideline of Orleans Road. On sheet number three of the planset, titled Road Plan View, there is a detail at the entrance that shows the line of sight, and we're showing that everything in that line of sight triangle at the intersection of Turtle Run and Orleans Road to be cleared. That's a requirement of your rules and regulations. Basically, the way that's laid out, and this is for site distance purposes.
The triangle?
The triangle, yeah. So what the requirement is, for a minor road like Turtle Run, you come up the center line of the road 100 feet, and you go down the center line and left and right on Orleans Road to establish those three points, and you connect the dots, and that's the area that will need to be cleared, and we show a new limit of clearing line on the plan. So that'll all be cleared out.
Perfect. Thank you.
There'll be no obstructions at the entrance.
This line of sight.
Any other questions from the Board, or concerns?
Right.
During none, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anybody from the public would like to address the Board, please stand up to the podium, record your name on the clipboard, I'm assuming there is one there, and announce your name and address. We'd like for you to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have signed the attendance sheet. My name is Christopher Senney, I'm in a...
I apologize for the confusion, I was reading your name and visually, and speaking it erroneously at the same time.
That's quite all right. Thank you. I have a law practice in Brewster, I live full-time in Brewster, I concentrate in land use. I appeared before your Board on May 24th on this matter. These are my clients. This is Lisa Martin, who lives at 14 Hidden Pond Circle. This is Trevor and Jocelyn Childs, who live at 52 Hidden Pond Circle, and Jack and Linda Burns, who live at 1119 Orleans Road. And their addresses and names have been provided underneath my signature in both letters I've sent. I've sent letters on May 24th and June 13th. We have not, my clients have not tried to oppose this project. In fact, I think we've been helpful. We communicated to the Board of Health that we did not have a problem with amalgamating open space and the smaller lots to qualify for the limitation of 440 gallons per builder's acre, which is 40,000 square feet. We made no other negative comments to the Board. We acknowledged that the variance that was being sought is reasonable. With the Conservation Commission, we did hire our own wetland specialist to check the flagging of the wetlands, and with the help of the applicant, the two wetland specialists had a site walk, some flags were adjusted slightly, and then we signed off in front of the Commission and said, "We concur with the delineation of the resources." So at no step have my clients tried to prevent this subdivision. They do want to make sure that it's implemented in a very careful and thoughtful way, and that's why they hired me and the wetland specialist. And we do have two concerns. One is Middle Road, which was just alluded to, and the other is the open space that is intended to be present along the perimeter of the subdivision for 50 feet into the property. We have a bylaw provision, a zoning bylaw provision, 325-51E4D, that's part of the special permitting regulations, which reads, "A minimum of 50 feet from the outer perimeter of the entire open space residential development. This 50-foot setback to be maintained in a naturally vegetated state to screen and buffer the development." So we have concerns about the way that's being handled. There's a difference between the preliminary subdivision plan that you approved and this definitive plan, and I would like to discuss that. First, I'll deal with Middle Road, and then I'll go to the open space. We are concerned that Middle Road, which is a way, a private way that's existed since before the Civil War, is being reconfigured. It is going to connect now to Route 39 by way of Turtle Run, about 50 or 75 feet short of where it does now. And I have driven by the Burns's mailbox, which says 1119 Orleans Road, which is the point at which Middle Road today intersects with Orleans Road. The difference between where these two will join, Orleans Road, is a hill. The hill on the town center side to the west, and when you exit Middle Road today, you can see the top of the hill, and you can see cars that are coming, and you are visible to those cars. When you slide this down 50 or 75 feet further to the east, that will not be the case. You will not be able to see the top of the hill. And so there are concerns that this ancient way is being shortened by a particular length. It's also being integrated with another roadway, and it might work fine. I said to your Board back on May 24th, the apron that they're proposing to integrate it may work, but in any event, it's very clear that it's being changed. Now, let's just talk about the rights that every property owner has to use a way that its property, their property, abuts. And this would apply to the applicant who owns this property, my clients, Jack and Linda Burns, who own property that abuts Middle Road, and a number of other homes. And I'll begin by saying that the applicant has not reached out to those abutters of Middle Road to discuss the changes that they would like to make to that ancient way, although we have been aware of it, and we have participated in the public process. Every owner of land that abuts a way has a right to use that way its entire length and to improve that way, so long as such use and improvement does not interfere with the rights that others have to do the same thing. So I can't tell you, perhaps no one in this room could tell you, if it is legal for one owner of land that abuts a way to shorten it by 50 or 75 feet, change the way it configures with a major busy road, and basically redirect it. Only a court of law could actually decide whether this degree of change falls within the rights that the applicant has as one of those abutters to do so. And we are not asking to go to court, and we are not asking that the applicant get everyone who butts Middle Road to sign off on this. We are asking that this Board incorporate protections of the rights that everyone else has to Middle Road within its deliberation and ruling on this definitive subdivision plan, and to look at the Declaration of Restrictions with a view toward making sure that everyone who buys a lot at Turtle Run, the five neighbors who will be living next to my clients in the future, takes titles subject to certain protections. And that's why you ask applicants to present you with a draft of the Declaration of Restrictions, which you did in this case, and the applicant has provided it. However, as I mentioned on May 24th, unless we build into that declaration something that becomes embedded in the title of the five property owners who will buy lots at Turtle Run, if we rely only on what is shown on the plan, we have not protected those other abutters well enough. We do need to build into this Declaration of Restrictions that will be recorded on the land records, an acknowledgement that Middle Road is being changed, and that the rights that my clients have and others have to Middle Road will be safeguarded and not interfered with. And I have proposed language that does that, and I ask the Board to consider asking the applicant to incorporate that protective language in that Declaration of Restrictions that will be recorded on the land records. That way, everyone who buys a parcel at Turtle Run will be on notice. So I did hear that the police and fire seem to be okay, although I think it was the Police Department that mentioned line of sight. I just want you to know, that line of sight is a real issue. I don't know if you've walked it, but when you are going to be stationed in a car that's gonna turn left or right out of Turtle Run, cars coming at a fairly fast clip over that hill are gonna be coming at you pretty quickly. And again, this changes what's existed for a long time in Middle Road. So moving to the other issue, open space, when you approved the preliminary subdivision plan, it showed that all 50 feet of the area that is to be left in a natural vegetated state was part of the open space that surrounds the perimeter of the subdivision. And that was a good plan, your Board approved it, and the neighbors liked it. They thought that this would protect them. And when the applicant prepared the definitive plan, this was changed, and on four of the five lots, part of the 50-foot buffer was incorporated into the private lots. And this is not as good in terms of protecting that 50-foot vegetated buffer. And I can show you the difference here in the, now, I have not seen Paragraph 14 that was just mentioned. The applicant did not send a copy of that to me. And frankly, since this is such an important issue, I think when we get to the end of the process tonight, this should be continued one more time, so that my clients and I have an opportunity to read this new language, which we've never seen. But the language that was incorporated into the draft Declaration of Restrictions that was submitted to you, in Paragraph 13, it recites the zoning bylaw that I just mentioned, and it describes the requirement that this 50-foot vegetated buffer be preserved, but then the applicant added this language. "The natural state area will remain, to the greatest extent practicable, in its natural state. If the natural state is disturbed, it will be revegetated with a combination of lawn, deciduous, and/or evergreen shrubs and trees." This is very different from having the full 50 feet in the open space that we now understand will be owned by the Conservation Commission, a change that we support. I've asked, in my request to modify this, to change that last sentence that would allow essentially lawn to be put in place of the natural vegetation, a sentence that reads otherwise. "The natural state area will remain in its natural state, undisturbed. No fences or other structures may be placed in the natural state area." That's all we're looking for. Now, our primary request is, you don't need to worry about language in the declaration if you go back to what was shown on the preliminary subdivision plan. Keep this area in the Conservation Commission-controlled and owned open space. It's a far better plan, it has much greater assurances that it will stay in its natural state. And that is possible because the zoning bylaw allows these lots to be quite small. 12,000 square feet is allowable because this is an open space residential development. And I appreciate that over 60% of the land on this property is being dedicated to open space. But what's happened here is that what was gonna be a ribbon of open space that would be truly protected on four lots has become absorbed into the building lots, without any real need to do that, because your zoning bylaws would allow the applicant to just conform that 50-foot line with the lot line. And that's what we ask you to do. It's cleaner, it's better, and it provides the assurances we need. And again, just like in front of the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission, we're not saying, "Don't approve this subdivision," but we ask you tonight, please, you approved a preliminary plan that had a particular program in it to protect the open space, and now that's been changed. Now, if for any reason that's not possible, we ask you to look at the language we want to substitute, because if you allow language that says that it will be protected to the greatest extent practicable, the Conservation Commission is not gonna protect this land to the greatest extent practicable. It's gonna protect this land. And then, what's stated is, if it happens to get disturbed, it will be revegetated with a combination of lawn, deciduous, or evergreen plants or trees. I think what will happen is private property owners are going to want to expand their lawns and their gardens and their landscaping, and it may be very beautiful, but it will not be a vegetated buffer, which is a requirement of the zoning bylaws. So I have drafted some changes, which I sent to Elaine. I hope, I know that didn't come until a day before the public hearing, and I know it can't get into your packet when it comes in that quickly, but again, I'm asking that this be continued one more time, so we can see this new language. But in my edits to that declaration, I have two paragraphs, and I'll just read them, they're not lengthy, and it would offer protections on both issues, Middle Road and the open space. On the open space, I write, "The owner of Open Space Parcel A and the owner of the road," so the road, Turtle Run, will not be owned by the Conservation Commission, it'll be owned by a homeowners' association. "Open Space Parcel A is a parcel that will be owned by the Conservation Commission and across which Middle Road traverses." So we have two property owners that we need to say in a declaration, "We'll take care of Middle Way, Middle Road." So I write, "The owner of Open Space Parcel A, the Conservation Commission, and the owners of the road, the homeowners' association, shall preserve full access to and use of Middle Road, parentheses, the way, so that private property owners adjacent to the property with rights in the way are not impeded in the exercise of such rights. It is recognized," here's where we're actually being helpful to the applicant. "It is recognized that the way may be altered by the incorporation into Turtle Run of an apron allowing a direct intersection with the road and access to Route 39 by way of the road. This modification of the way shall not in any way prevent or hinder access to Route 39. The owners of the Open Space Parcel A and the road shall maintain the portions of the way on their respective properties, clearing felled trees, branches, and other debris, and keeping the way, as modified, clear and passable." Eastward Companies is going to go away in a few years, and there will be five new residents of Harwich who will be neighbors to my client. It is essential that those five new property owners take title to their property in a situation where their title is embedded with the terms of a declaration that protects Middle Road, and that's what I've tried to write here. The second paragraph has to do with the open space. Recognizing that one of the purposes of Open Space Parcels A and B is to provide abutting residential property owners a natural vegetated visual screening of the property, and that the declarant has incorporated part of the natural 50-foot vegetated buffer required in the Harwich zoning bylaws, Section 32551E4D, into lots 2, 3, 4, and 5. "Direct abutters to Open Space Parcels A and B, as well as the owner of Open Space Parcel A and B, shall have the right to enforce in a court of competent jurisdiction the requirements of Paragraph 13 of this declaration with regard to the preservation in their natural state of the area on the lots designated natural state line." The area designated natural state line is the part of the 50-foot buffer that got incorporated into the building lots. I think my clients need this protection, because without it, they would be able to come to your Board in the future. Let's say the owner of Lot 2 puts lawn where the balance of the 50-foot buffer should have been preserved. Yes, my clients can come to this Board and claim that that's a violation, although the way the declaration is written right now, it wouldn't be, but it might be a zoning violation, because the zoning bylaw requires it. This is not good enough, and on May 24th, I told you, I had a case in front of the land court that was this exact situation, I represented an abutter, who was pointing to a subdivision approval and plan that had a perimeter buffer. And I said to Judge Keith Long at the land court, "The intention is clear. The intention is to protect the neighbors of this subdivision, not the other residents in the subdivision, and all of these neighbors are cutting into that, into that area that was supposed to be left as open space." The judge said to me, "Is that all you have, Mr. Senney? Didn't this get reduced to writing in a declaration?" And I said, "No, all I have is the subdivision approval and the subdivision plan, and it won't be good enough relief." Now, all of the language I read to you is very reasonable. We're just trying to have a realistic tool to enforce the protection of the open space, and have everyone take title to their lots at Turtle Run, knowing about these obligations and respecting them, then my clients are completely happy to be supportive of this application, and they will be good neighbors to these future Harwich residents. To conclude... To conclude, on the open space, we prefer that this board stick with the program that was very clear in the already-approved preliminary subdivision plan, that all of the 50-foot vegetated buffer be, be in the open space, which will become owned and controlled by the Conservation Commission. It's always hard for a land use attorney to know and to advise their client whether we should suggest an alternative. Because the minute I suggest an alternative, what we really want may become less possible. Although, I do think that's cleaner and better. And we debated it. We discussed it among ourselves, and we decided, "Let's, let's propose an alternative. Be, be very clear with the board," which I'm trying to be, "that we prefer that the entire 50-foot vegetated buffer be part of the open space." But we did offer an alternative, which is in the form of protections that would be incorporated into a declaration that will be embedded in the title of each of the five owners who will buy property at Turtle Run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sunny. Any questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Sunny. What is your, what do your clients see as the primary threat to Middle Road with the apron constructed as planned? That it would just neglect?
That there will be neglect, that, so as I said, there are two owners
Right.
...of land that accommodates Middle Road. The Owners Association will most likely take good care of its road, but I don't know about the apron. If these new owners don't see this in a declaration, that this is their obligation, they may not.
Okay.
And the Conservation Commission, I'm sure, will take good care of Parcel A.
Right.
Although, if this isn't part of their title, it should be part of their title too, they may be looking at larger conservation issues and not so focused on, "Hey, we've got to make sure if a tree falls down along Middle Road, it's our job. It's not our property. It's going to be the Conservation Commission's property." So, so we would like everyone to take title, understanding these are very important requirements.
Thank you. Yes, Mary?
So, respectfully, I, I think I disagree with respect to your comment on the Conservation Commission. I think that's a large onus to put on the Conservation Commission for them to protect Middle Road. You know, if my neighbor's tree falls on my lot, it's my, it's my house insurance that's going to take care of it off of my lot, not, not my next-door neighbors. So, I'm, I'm, I'd be a little concerned about that, and I'd want, I'd want our counsel to, to speak to that, particularly for the Conservation Commission. You know, I, I understand the point with the homeowners' association. And I guess, I guess my only other question for the applicants would be, with respect to the definition of the natural state, I do see the concern that it, it certainly gives, it, instead of asking for permission, it's going to be, oop, somebody cleared the lot, cleared 20 feet, and, and now what? So, I, I guess, is there a reason that, that you can't go back to just a regular, the, the normal definition of natural state as opposed to the, the end where if it, if it becomes cleared, cleared and disturbed, that they can just plant, they can just put grass?
Well, I think the, the, the reason we put that language in there is, is not so that the, the lot owner can clear the, the area. It's if there's some work that has to be done, septic system, utilities, whatever it might be. We've had experience over at, what do you call it, Hidden Cove?
Hidden Cove, yeah.
And we have a subdivision alongside the Rooster Town Line there at the Captain's Course, and we have this exact situation there, and we've had no difficulty there. We haven't had to, nobody's had to do any work in that area. And so, we're simply following up on that as, simply as a, a-
Do you see it as like a trap door?
Well, just in case, it's just in case something happens, you know, that-
Contingency.
Yeah, for, you know, for some very good reason. Not that they want to increase the size of their lawn.
Right.
So-
Is there a happy medium, do you think, in the language that could be?
Well, if we wanted, if you wanted to add language about, you know, it might be necessary for the installation of utilities and/or something like that-
To spell out the contingency.
Be happy to add that.
Bill? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you done, Mary? I didn't want to-
Yeah, I am. I was going to just say, I do think that would make a, a little more, a little more sense and give us a little more comfort.
Okay.
Okay, just to let the board know and the public know, in the zoning laws, the options you have mentioned are available. And it says, "Conveyed to the town to be placed under the care of custody and control of the Conservation Commission and be accepted by it. For a park or open space use, land conveyed to the town will be open to the public use." So I want the public to know that.
Yeah.
And the second one is, when the commission takes that property over, the private road will be, the owners, the people using that private road will be responsible for the repairs, not the Conservation Commission.
Well, and if I could, I'd be happy to address that. The Middle Road, which, you know, I don't doubt, you know, Chris's suggestion, it's been there since before the Civil War, it's surely been there a long time. And the people who have rights there are what we call common law rights, you know, can't be taken away from, and the, and we're happy to assist them crossing our asphalted road by putting aprons. If they want to, if they want to continue straight on, you know, we're not necessarily shortening Middle Road, we're just going to put an apron across. If they want to continue using their existing exit onto Orleans Road, we don't think that's a very good idea, but, and we're happy to have them use Turtle Run. But the, the, the idea that anybody other than the people who use Middle Road would have any obligation to maintain it, we'll maintain Turtle Run and the aprons, but other than that, any, any maintenance belongs to the people who use it, not, because we don't have a right to use it necessarily. I mean, it's kind of, as, as Chris said, theoretically, we have a right to use it because it goes across our property, and that would give us a right to drive up and down Middle Road if we wanted to. But I'm pretty certain that these five lot owners are going to want to drive on the asphalt And the, so, one of our concerns is that the request that Chris has made on behalf of his clients is granting them property rights they don't already possess. And I know you know that you don't have the authority to grant property rights to people. And so, you know, the, the, so I think, you know, the Declaration of Protective Covenants is an agreement between Eastwood Companies and future lot owners, and then really, basically, an agreement amongst themselves. You know, the, the idea of, we call them protective covenants because the idea is, we want to protect the residential neighbor nature of the subdivision. You know, so, I think Chris's clients, you know, avenue of relief, if there is a violation, for instance, is to, like any other citizen of the town of Harwich, they could, they would either go to the Conservation Commission and say, "There's been improper use of the open space." Conservation Commission's going to have the ability to enforce that. Or they could, I mean, theoretically, it's a zoning violation, but I, I don't think the billing inspector's going to be out there very often, but the Conservation Commission clearly has the ability to, you know, protect the nature of the open space. And again, so, trading on our experience at Hidden Cove there over by the Captain's Courses, we've never had a problem with maintaining the open space. The property owners are respectful. We, we demark the space so they, you know, so that their landscapers don't inadvertently go into the natural area. So, you know, I, again, I, we believe that, you know, we've done a lot of work here in the town, and, and we've had a lot of experience maintaining these kinds of properties, and the, and granting a neighbor some property rights, or some right to enforce something, is, first of all, it's unnecessary because there's sufficient enforcement mechanisms through the town and the, so I think that it's certainly much more efficient for a neighbor to go to the town than it would be to file a lawsuit, which would be their only avenue of, of filing an objection, you know, an enforcement action. So, again, we respect the neighbors, we respect their rights, we respect the laws of the town of Harwich, as we have in the past. And again, we use Hidden Cove as a, as an example of how we've done that. So we, we believe that the language that we've presented in the Declaration of Protective Covenants is suitable. In fact, we, we did change the, the language, once we realized that there weren't going to be any restrictions because the property's going to be given to the Conservation Commission. That's when we added the language in our protective covenants about the natural area. So the property owners would be aware of the fact that it's a town bylaw that has to be, you know, that that area has to be properly maintained in its natural state. So, again, with all due respect to, to Chris and his clients, you know, we believe that we shouldn't be obligated to grant them rights. The, I understand their concerns regarding having some of the open space included within the lots, but we've done that successfully in the past. And, and the, Dave Clark has said it's 12 and a half feet wide. It's not a significant area for the lot owner, the, you know, and the, the, and I know that at, at Hidden Cove, you know, there have been fences that actually go through, because we have part of the open space on the lot, goes on the lot line. That keeps, over there, keeps golfers from wandering into the yard to pick up their golf balls, and, and keeps, you know, makes a safe area for children to play. People can let their pets out without worrying about them, so, while still giving them full dimension of their, of their lots. So we, we think that the, the bylaw's sufficient protection, and, and we'd be happy to work with the neighbors if, if they want to have an apron on the other side so they can continue going. We're happy to do that for them, too.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, John Burns. I just wanted to address the removal of felled trees. We have, as a neighborhood, have always taken care of that section of Middle Road. When the tornado went through, we didn't ask for any help from anybody else. We took care of it ourselves. So I'm not going to expect conservation to come in and take care of the road where we've always been maintaining it. Several years ago, the prior owner of this property decided to put a fence right across his property line, which blocked Middle Road, and the fire department just came and took it down and told not to do that again. So we're not taking any kind of drastic issues like that. I just want to let you know, we are trying to maintain the road, and no one else is going to have to do it for us.
Thank you, sir. Bill, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, Mr. Riley, back to the natural state line. Would it be possible-
You guys want me to count the site distance? Okay.
Would it be possible-
I'm sorry, can you say it again, Bill?
The natural state line.
Yes.
Just the two divisions between the, the natural line and the natural state line, I guess. Would it be possible to stake the lot line and stake the natural state line with cement bounds? So then, the owners of that, each one of those lots will know exactly where the properties are.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
I can add that to the subdivision plan that gets recorded at the registry deeds to where those additional-
And then, you know, it'd be an excuse for somebody to intrude-
One, two, three.
...without permission.
Right, no, and, and, you know, as I say, we've done that, or something similar to that, Hidden Cove, so that primarily, they keep landscapers out, that's the-
That's their main problem.
That's the main problem. Enthusiastic landscaper.
I have a question. So, to be clear, the 50 feet that's gotten absorbed into these lots, you're not saying you're going to change that back, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the, the abutters do not have that 50-feet protection?
They do have that 50-feet protection. Just part of the 50-feet protection is going to be owned by a lot owner rather than just the Conservation Commission.
Okay, and that is usually where people run into problems, correct? So I would be in support of some way, whether it's the, the bounds or whatever, making sure that's clear, because whether it's landscapers or not, we always talk about maintaining the natural state, and then somebody takes it down, and then it's, oh, whoops.
Well, you know, in, in, in my experience, people actually going off their lots into the natural area.
Yeah, so if we have an opportunity with even these five lots to make that clear, then we're protecting the abutters, and also, we're educating these new owners for that not to happen. So whether it's a cement bound or whatever else, I think that's just good sense because whether it's happened or not, all of us can give anecdotal evidence that this stuff happens all the time. And so, we have an obligation to try to not have that happen.
So this is the-
No, and we accept, and we have that obligation, and we accept it.
So this is the-
So, I believe that's what Bill had just requested, and you had just agreed to-
Right.
Yeah.
Correct, was to stake it, so-
Stake it, and then have language saying that it's staked, and so that it isn't inadvertently, you know-
Navigated, mapped.
Yeah.
It'll be on the subdivision plan if, if, they just said they mark it on the, on the, the subdivision plan, so-
But you'll mark it on the deed, but then will there be language to go with it?
So if they're marking it on the subdivision plan-
Well, see, it's-
And then they stake it on the, on the lot, then it's, it's going to be there.
It's going to be there, okay. Well, that, that's going to forget.
The, the, the deed references the Declaration of Protective Covenants as, as, you know, governing the operation of the subdivision. So, I mean, the two together-
Could be protection, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clark, did you say that the, the width of the area that we're talking about is about 12 feet?
12 and a half feet.
12 feet. Is there, is a good compromise to take that 12 feet out, back out of the property, each property, and put it back into the natural state?
Well, we had all the natural state land within the open space on the, on the preliminary plan, and the abutters objected to that. Specifically, on the west side, we had a, I believe we had a 15-foot buffer because we considered the owners unknown as open space. So when I met with John Ideman after the preliminary meeting, he spoke to me of the comments that the abutters attorney made about that issue, and so, we changed it to this configuration, and John thought that was a good compromise.
So in other words, what Dave is saying is, the open, the open space, the natural area on the west side, where it says owners unknown, is wider now than it had been in the original design, and we changed it at John Ideman's request. And that's why we shifted the lots over 12 and a half feet.
So we, so we apportioned the, the, the open space requirement to both sides of the property.
So, what I'm hearing, I understand the explanation. The question still remains, is, is, would a good compromise- The question still remains, is, would a good compromise be to give that 12 feet back?
What would require is to redo the subdivision. So to tell you the truth, we don't think that's, we already compromised with the town, so we don't want to have to go through it again, candidly.
Mary?
I just want to make it clear that regardless of where it is, even if it's protected for natural vegetative state, Conservation Commission can still.
Right.
Enforce the natural vegetative state if a homeowner inadvertently clears it, which we hope doesn't happen.
It's always a mistake.
Which we hope doesn't happen.
Oh, gee, I didn't know that.
You know, and hopefully council can put some amendments to that language so that it's clear what those.
I'll change it.
What those kind of reasons are.
Make sure that it's, yeah.
But the Conservation Commission can still enforce it whether it's on a homeowner's lot versus on their own land, if it's written that way and it's protected that way.
And just because it's in its natural state, it doesn't mean it's not usable by the family. So the dog can run there, so the kids can run through it. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just usable area.
Foundation of use, right?
Right.
Sir? Yes, I, Trevor Childs, Hidden Pond Circle. Yeah, I'm just, I'm getting confused by this. We were here at the preliminary meeting and we all saw a 50-foot buffer as required in the bylaw that was proposed. And now it's being eaten away with the idea that a fence can go in to the buffer and then lawn can then, you know, by accident eat into that area. And it's 12 feet. We just wanted our 50 feet. And yes, there was some identification that under this rule, there needed to be, maintain a buffer around the entire property. And it just feels as if it's obvious to everyone that we're about to see a fence put in, in the buffer, and lawn created, and then we won't be able to use that, you know, that space. Yes, I have kids. You know, we're excited to have neighbors and all that. We just want to have a beautiful, natural vegetative state. This is forest for all of us. We walk through it. So we're already losing a lot of just natural land, access to Thompson Park. You know, people walk their dogs, people ride bikes. So this is a great community and we welcome the homes that come. Excuse, sorry?
No, when you're done.
So it was a preliminary plan where we saw 50 feet of open space. We thought that was what's going to be there. You know, it just, it just feels very obvious where this is going to end up. And the idea of a contingency for utilities, there shouldn't be utilities in the buffer area. You know, it should just be trees. You know, the idea of relating it to golf courses and golf balls, we don't have that. It's just, we just would like the natural trees in their spot, not mowed down. Once a fence goes up in the area, we won't be able to see what's going on. The trees will come down. It'll be the landscaper, it'll be the lot owner. We have no say about any of this. We're just going to keep seeing that this is going to get eroded away from us. So that's what we're looking for. We just want the, anything that says natural state, it would be just easiest and most simplest to say, that should just be open space. Concom and everyone just knows, don't touch it. Enjoy it, but just don't touch it.
Thank you, Mary.
I just want to point out to everyone, everybody's talking about preliminary plans. Preliminary subdivision plans are just that, they're preliminary. They mean, they truly mean nothing to us. If we had approved it or we had disapproved of it, the applicant can still come forward with a definitive plan. So I just want to, not necessarily for the people in the room, but for the people that are watching, you know, the preliminary plan is just that. It's kind of like a space holder. It's an opportunity for the developer to come before us and get some feedback before they move forward on their definitive. So, you know, we keep hearing about preliminaries a lot, but preliminary is strictly just that.
Understood. But the requirement is a 50-foot naturally stated buffer. And the idea that a fence is going to go in there and that lawn is allowed in there is just, you know, forecasting what this is going to be. And so it's just, the simplest and most protective thing we can all agree on is anything that says natural state should just be part of the open space. And then we are all very clear that the concom is in jurisdiction and putting in meets and bounds and then hiding it with a fence, no one's going to see that, no one's going to follow that. These lots are then going to be in the woods, there are no other people around except us to start seeing trees come down behind fences. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. What's the will of the board at this point? Oh, I'm sorry, please, by all means.
So Lisa Martin, I, my husband and I own 14 Hidden Pond Circle. We also own the natural lot that is also abutting this, which is, I think I brought this up before, here, court ordered to stay in its natural habitat. So we have property that needs to stay that way, that's abutting this. So feel strongly that that should continue on. And if we're forced to keep it in its natural state, then so should the area that we're calling the buffer. It should stay in its natural state, should just be, you know, in my mind, my land is precedence to that. So just wanted to bring that forward and I'm in agreement with my neighbors that, you know, we're just saying, we're hearing a lot of potential, we've never had a problem. If you've never had a problem, then we should just put it, the language in that we're hoping to get in there just to kind of say, leave it in its natural state. To Trevor's comments, there are some ways that go to the bike path as well as to Thompson's field. So those have been enjoyed by all families. We're hoping that will be enjoyed by these future families as well. So just wanted to bring those comments forwards on behalf of my husband and I. I also want to talk a little bit about the line of sight coming down that hill. So, but to get to Hidden Pond Circle, we have to access Little Lane. So you're coming down that hill. There's been plenty of times where you can't see, I'm stopped, turn right, I'm waiting for oncoming traffic. Sometimes it gets very scary where cars are coming at 40 miles an hour over that hill and you're just nervous, like, I hope they can see me quick before I have to turn into Little Lane. I also am a mother of two boys. My youngest son is Harwich Elementary School, my middle son, my oldest son, excuse me, is at the middle school. These buses don't go down these roads, so they have to be picked up on 39, right there at the end of Little Lane and 39. And every morning I watch, you know, the bus driver kind of wait and make sure these cars that are flying down that hill, my kids have to stay off to the side. We have to make sure all the cars are at a complete stop before they can cross the street to get onto the bus. So just wanted to bring that forward, too, and that line of sight over the hill. Buses will not go down Little Lane, it's a private way, rightfully so. So we, you know, I bring my kids up to the end, to that public road for that bus situation. So I wanted to bring that forward as well for the elementary school, middle school and the high school. And, yeah, so I, and I just kind of want to comment to, I know the language has changed, I know it's preliminary, so I'm glad we're having this session, I'm glad to be here. I just haven't heard why the language was changed. I heard when it was changed, but I'm still not hearing a good reason for why it needed to be changed. So, you know, just from what I'm hearing and observing, just wanted to bring that forward as well. So, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further comments from the public?
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Cashman-Childs. I live at 52 Hidden Pond Circle and I'm not sure how many of you guys have been able to go down and witness this beautiful part of the world that we live in and we're so thankful to live there, myself as well. I've got two boys and we love raising our kids in this area and it's special. It's, you know, it's beautiful and it's natural and there's nothing around you. I can yell at my husband and nobody will hear you because there's so much open space. It's great. But in all seriousness, to the point of the attorney here making some kind of correlation between this development and another one where there is a golf course, well, we're not a golf course. We're families that are living on this street that are enjoying this natural space that we call home, that we love and enjoy. And so there's no threat of a golf ball hitting their property or any of those suggestions that were made in putting a fence up to that point. And so I just think it's really important to preserve the area. And I agree with your point you said earlier that, you know, preliminary is just, a preliminary really means nothing. But at the same time, I come from the world of development, you put your best foot forward when you give a preliminary presentation. You put your best intentions forward. And then all of a sudden, when you change those intentions, as neighbors, you get worried because the thing that has changed here is a major thing for us. It requires us to be the police of these people. And the reality is, we're not talking to these gentlemen here, they're going to be our neighbors. They're going to then sell to five other families, which we hope, we love and enjoy and we trick or treat and it's a wonderful experience, but we don't know who they are. So we have to have language that protects us. And that's why that 50-feet buffer is important. Because I don't want to play police, I want to enjoy my land. I want to make sure that there is proper language in place that protects us, that protects them, and to make sure that we can have good neighbors. But certainly not with a fence involved where you're going to impact this area. So all we're asking is, you put your best foot forward on day one with the preliminary, we're asking you to keep that best foot forward with this plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Mr. Steny?
Who ever mentioned a fence?
Thank you very much. Just quickly in response to the applicant's statements, there was a statement that if we want to continue to use Middle Road the way it is laid out now, we can do that. But once Turtle Run is there, it will become very difficult. There will be the apron and we will be able to turn onto Turtle Run and access Route 39 the way the five residents of Turtle Run will do so. We couldn't continue because there'll be a curb on the other side of Turtle Run. So to be able to traverse where we do now, where the Burns do and others who use Middle Road for access, this is going to change it. And as I've said now twice, it may be okay, but we haven't really had much input with the applicant in terms of how this is done. And we do think that protections in declarations are important. And that leads to the second point, which is that Attorney Riley said that we shouldn't be asking this board to grant private property rights to the neighbors. We're not. Your board is not being asked to do that. We're asking the declarant to do that. To build into the declaration they already record to govern how this subdivision is going to operate, protections for the neighbors. We're part of this process, we're right next door, there are real rights here, and we would like more opportunity to work with them on this declaration. But in no case have we asked your board to grant us property rights. That leads to a request. I've asked to continue, I would ask again, and I would invite the applicant to sit with us and go through the terms of the declaration that might be best for everyone. And we'd like that opportunity and it hasn't really been afforded. For example, I didn't get a copy of what came into the board today. And we did cooperate in front of the Conservation Commission, but there hasn't been much cooperation here. Finally, in terms of, you don't need the declaration because you can always come here or to the Zoning Board of Appeals. In the case I've mentioned, that was in Sandwich, we did go to the town. So both this board and the Zoning Board of Appeals are going to be in a difficult position if the five property owners begin to take over the part of the 50-foot buffer that's on their land. Because what you will be presented with is opinions on both sides because all of the property owners at Turtle Run are probably going to be interested in doing this. So you will hear a lot of people say, well, this is fine, don't enforce that, it's working fine and it's been, you know, this is how this land is being used now. There are sheds here and that's what happened in the Sandwich case. And so we did try to get relief from the town. It didn't work as these deliberation processes are often quite complex with people of different opinions. We went to court, but I didn't have the tool that I'm asking this board to help us have in this case. So I would ask that the applicant join with us in asking this board to continue the matter so that we can sit down and go through the proposed declarations, we can take a look at the language they've added. And I would like to ask about our language and see what pieces of this might be acceptable. Even if it's not acceptable to say, if some of this land, and by the way, it's not really 12 feet, just to be clear, it's 15 feet on three of the lots and 30 feet on the fourth. So, I mean, 12 is great and I appreciate the comments, well, why don't you just put that back in the open space? In reality, it's 15 feet on three of the lots and 30 on the other. So I would like a chance to meet with this applicant and their attorney and try to negotiate the best possible set of declarations that will protect everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steny.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
So I have a question for Bill Riley.
Sure.
Middle Road has two accesses, right? One off of 39 and one off of Middle Lane, correct?
Say that again?
Little Lane and.
Little Lane.
Oh, right, yes.
All right, is one of the access points for Middle Road. Why not?
Hidden Pond Circle.
It's Hidden Pond Circle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Middle Road goes across Hidden Pond Circle.
Right, so they have access both ways.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
I don't know that.
They could go on the hidden way and go back up to 39.
I don't know that they would have the right to use Hidden Pond Circle because the Childs and the Martins own it on both sides of the road, so they own, they have the fee in the way, as we say. And I believe they treat it as a private road, so I don't know that anybody coming down Middle Road would have a right to turn onto Hidden Pond Circle and use it.
I'm just stating that the owners of the private road have the right to go either way.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I keep asking about compromise. Could, would you be willing to be more restrictive for the language that talks about redress if a property owner does something that they shouldn't do? And the language that was written, that was suggested to take care of that problem included grass and like vegetation, and I don't have the exact quote, but for example, could we take out the word "grass" so that?
Yeah, well, as I indicated.
Or other items that aren't considered natural.
As I indicated to, when Mary had that question, you know, we'll change the language. And although, you know, we wouldn't be willing to request a continuance, I would be willing to sit down with Mr. Steny and talk about some of the language in Protective Covenants. I tell you, we feel very strongly about not granting them any rights, but we'll be happy to see if we can work on language that would make them feel like their interest, the interest of the natural state is being protected. Be happy to do that.
Thank you. One way or the other, the Conservation Commission will be in charge of the whole 50 feet.
Right, and the, you know, Mr. Steny, Chris keeps mentioning this case in Sandwich and I, you know, I don't know, you know, in that instance, I don't know who the enforcing authority was. I know one thing for sure about the Conservation Commission here in Harwich, they're not shy. So, you know, I think that it's a great compromise to have them take possession rather than the homeowners association, which, and I think that's where real enforcement problems come in, when it's a homeowners association that's theoretically enforcing it.
Yes, sir.
Jack Burns, again, just in regards to the access of the property at 1119 Orleans Road. The address is Orleans Road. It doesn't mean you can't get in from another way, but the utilities are Orleans Road, the taxes are Orleans Road, the water department is Orleans Road. I don't understand why everybody keeps saying, but can't you go another way? If you lived on Sisson Road, would you like your driveway to be blocked and have to come in from Forest Street? It's just not right. You know, the address is Orleans Road, should be able to access from Orleans Road. Been able to access that cottage since the '40s.
Nobody's asking you to not use Route 39.
Okay, it has been brought up by this board before.
Pardon me?
It has been brought up by this board before during the preliminary hearing.
Middle Road does have two accesses.
Yeah, actually it goes all the way to Depot. Did you know that?
You can get there.
It's supposed to be open.
I know.
You know, this is what can happen to a road when it's supposed to be open and it's not paid attention to.
It was open when I was a 16-year-old boy.
It was open 20, it was open 20 years ago. It was open 15 years ago. Do you remember Craig Morris with the police department?
Sure.
He used to drive the full length of it.
Yep.
All right?
So.
Just saying.
Mr. Chairman, just one more quick. Okay, let's, I think we.
Thank you. A moment ago, a board member asked, well, won't the Conservation Commission be in charge of the full 50 feet? As this is presented to you, the answer is no. The Conservation Commission will own 20 feet in some cases and 35 feet in other cases, and that will fall fully within their jurisdiction. The part of the land that is on private lots and marked natural The part of the land that is on private lots and marked natural state line, the Conservation Commission will not have any jurisdiction over. I don't think that's accurate.
We'd have to make that in writing.
Good evening, members. My name is Bill Marsh. And I am the owner of the property and owner of Easter Companies. And I want to tell everyone here tonight, and a lot of you know, that I've been developing and building property for 52 years. And I've, and I've worked very, very closely, both of these gentlemen, particularly Mr. Clark. And I can't say enough good in the way of admiration for his work and the quality that he provides. When I first became interested in this property, the previous owner gave me a subdivision plan that he had done by, by another engineer surveyor. And it shows six, six or seven, I can't remember which, grid subdivision lots. I sat with David. We did a bunch of our own topo study, a bunch of environmental study by hiring the best people we knew. And that we came forward, we decided the best thing to do was to do a cluster subdivision and not a grid subdivision because it protected the land and it protected the environment. At the first preliminary meeting that I came to, I was approached by a bunch of these abutters outside the meeting, at the end of the meeting. They asked me if the land was be for sale. I said, I'd be happy to talk. I passed out my business card to most of them. I had never heard a thing from anybody. These folks have been obstructionist from the beginning. They've hired their own peer review to, to challenge our environmental gal. And, and your own conservation agent told us that our environmentalist was conservative in their opinion. So I felt we were in good shape. We're planning to build some 800 feet of road before we even get to the first lot. It's a very expensive proposition, but I think it's the best use of the land. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. So what's the will of the board at this point? Excuse me.
I don't, I wouldn't ask if we're ready for a vote. It sounds like there are a number of other issues that need to be resolved. And if I heard correctly, the applicant indicated his willingness to sit with the abutters and try to come up with acceptable compromises. That's the word again. So I'd be willing to make a motion for that. I don't know what the rest of the will of the board is.
Is that a motion?
It would require a continuance, I believe.
Right.
Is that a motion?
Not yet.
I will second that motion.
Megan, what's our, what's our next meeting? Yeah. What's our next meeting?
I said not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said June 28th.
If I could, if I could address that for just a minute. The, as you know, you voted to approve this subdivision today. Because I can tell you, the lines on the plan are not going to change. We have a lengthy period of time between your vote today and when you actually sign the plan. And I would commit to you that I will meet with Mr. Steny during that time period and work on language, as we've discussed here, to make sure that it's clear that, you know, you can't go into that natural area just because you want to have three more tomato plants. And so that is what I'm suggesting is fair for the abutters.
But you don't, you don't want a continuance for this to be a stipulation on a formally, formally agreed upon stipulation for kind of acceptance?
Could you wait till our next meeting? If our next meeting is only two weeks? Yeah.
Our meeting is on the 28th, 14 days.
As opposed to, I'm just asking because my, some of my colleagues are requesting the extension.
I guess, I guess I would have to ask, you know, what do you see as the advantage of another two weeks?
Paper.
What, what do you see as the advantage of another two weeks? If the design-
So the findings that are attached to the property reflect both parties, as opposed to having an open-ended agreement where we're just going to come back and have more disagreements. That's our concern, frankly, and opening the town up to a suit. That's my concern. So I was just trying to keep it tidy. You know, if we're, if there is some way, I think Bill was just asking, is there some way to have an open-ended, way to do that?
To accept, to accept-
Total conditional acceptance or something like that.
Conditions.
But once, but once you vote it, you vote it and the clock starts ticking.
Right.
So, I mean, if changes end up being made, to me, if, to me, two weeks.
What's your recommended two weeks?
I, I'm not making a recommendation either way.
I would not be comfortable in signing something tonight with the assumption or confirmation that the, the two parties are going to get together and hopefully come up with a compromise.
Right.
Hopefully it would happen, but it could not happen as well. And as Mary said, we would have already signed and things are moving along, so if we can go with a, a two-week continuance so that-
Well, if I could, if I could address that, the- You know, whether, whether I reach an agreement with Mr. Steny's clients on some minor modification to the language in the declaration protective covenants, the design of the subdivision isn't going to change. So, I mean, the, I think the remarkable thing about our hearing tonight is that aside from the conversation about the, you know, having line of sight worked on, which David has designed in accordance with your regulations, there's really been no comment about subdivision itself.
Right.
So, and so I think it's, I think it's fair to ask for a vote on the subdivision. And I, I commit to you that at a minimum, we'll change the language in that regarding the natural area so that the only way for going into that is if it's something that is required by, you know, the health, safety and morals of the, of the property owners, like a utility or a septic system issue. So, I mean, you're right, two weeks is not the end of the world. But, you know, we could come back here in two weeks and not have an agreement.
I understand that.
Okay.
Believe me, I, I understand there's no-
What I'm, what I'm saying is-
No guarantee that you're going to, that you're going to end up agreeing. I'm just, I'm asking, I'm, I'm looking at it from a practical side. You need a vote.
Right.
And you've got at least two people that have already gone on record to say that, that they want a continuance. So I, I'm, I'm wondering if two weeks isn't a good idea.
Right.
And then at least, at least it's not a-
Screw down the ambiguities and narrow the divide between the parties and I think you're fine. I just think it's a matter of hammering out the language. And our meeting is on the 28th. And if, I suspect that if we were to have a vote on a continuance to a date and time no later than 6:30 on that time, at that date, we'd probably have open ears and very brisk handling in the business.
All right, then we would accept a two-week continuance.
Do I have a motion?
So I move that we continue public hearing on TB 2022-12, Eastward MBT LLC as trustee until June 28th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any post? We look forward to a satisfactory resolution for all parties. Thank you all for attending. I appreciate you taking the time, everybody. Thank you. We have, in our public meeting section, briefings, correspondence and advisory opinions, I suspect. We have nothing on that agenda. Is there any other, anything from historic?
No, historic's canceled for tomorrow evening and postponed for a week.
And how did, what about the property owner next to the Dodge House? The German woman who wanted to move-
Oh, it was approved.
It was approved, okay. And the chimney for the Royal Dowell House? That was accepted?
It was the, they were going to put chimney caps, false caps on the top, yeah.
Any other business before the board? All in favor of the motion?
I do have a question. Do we know any progress on a replacement for town planer?
We had several applicants, one interview with a, a very good prospect.
Good, great, glad to hear it.
Excellent.
Thank you for your service.
Have them on board before the two weeks expires.
Thank you, Megan, for serving tonight. I appreciate your help, really appreciate it. All to entertain a motion to the adjourn?
So move.
So move, second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you all. A little bit longer than I thought it was going to be tonight.